Mrs. Baez, would you please take the role?
Of course. District 1 Barbara McQuinn?
Here.
District 2 Chuck Shaw.
Here.
District 3 Karen Brill. District 4 Erica Whitfield. District 5 Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District 6 Marcia Andrews.
Here.
District 7 Deborah Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Brill is here.
Is Whitfield on the phone or she?
No, I don't think Ms. Whitfield is on the phone, yes.
Would you all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Board members, I wanted to start the meeting by explaining to each of you why I called today's board meeting. Last Friday morning, I spoke with Mark Mitchell and asked him if he had spoken with Ray and Associates to ensure that they understood what information the board members indicated they wanted from Ray and Associates before the board was prepared to shortlist the candidates at the March 4th board meeting. Mr. Mitchell advised me that Ray and Associates was not willing to provide the board with the backup information requested in previous board meetings, and specifically at the most recent board meeting, particularly the information as to why 11 of the applicants were vetted out of the recommended list provided by Ray to the board. I felt it important, given the timeline approved by the board, to ensure that the collective board became aware of this before next week's scheduled meeting to shortlist the candidates, and that the board had the opportunity to address it in whatever manner the board deemed appropriate. As all of you know, the only way to do so, to be in conformance with sunshine law, is at a public meeting. In the meantime, the board is in receipt of an email from Ray and Associates, which we received yesterday, which essentially offers the board its continued assistance under the condition that we continue the process of interviewing the selected candidates. It is clear Ray and Associates will not comply with providing the backup vetting information the board has requested. It has also become clear, as a result of the meeting and discussion with Ray's representative last week, that there may have been confusion over the criteria of the requirements in the job description, specifically whether the requirement is for an IG certification at time of appointment or within a longer period of 18 months. Our general counsel addressed this in a memo to each of us, which we also received yesterday. It is paramount that this board select this important position with fairness, transparency, and careful consideration. With that in mind, I suggest the board consider the options going forward which satisfy these considerations. I believe the following three options should be discussed and considered by the board, but certainly any other options the board members have should also be discussed and considered. Option 1 would be continue the process with Ray and Associates as set forth in its email. This means that six or seven, the six or seven shortlisted candidates will be considered by the board, I'm sorry, this means that the six or seven current listed candidates will be considered by the board to shortlist and interview, and there will be no additional background information beyond what Ray and Associates has provided in the package of February 11, 2020. There would likely be no extension of the timeline if we chose this option. Option 2 would be dismiss Ray and Associates and continue the process with District HR, who can take the entire poll of applicants, all 18, and perform off a full vetting. HR provides a full report to the board, allows time for the audit committee to weigh in on the candidates, and then have the board shortlist the candidates for interviewing and final selection. A slight modification of the timeline may be necessary with this option. Option 3 would be to terminate the contract with Ray and Associates and terminate the current process, modify the timeline, revise the job description and IG policy so that the job description the board adopted at its December 18 meeting and the IG policy are not in conflict with one another with respect to the 18-month criteria, and begin the selection process again using our HR department or another search consultant. It seems clear to me that the current process did not meet the expectations of the board, and rather than continue to discuss and express our disappointment with that, I would like to suggest to the board that we move forward carefully, consider the options at hand, and reset the path moving forward. As a point of information, Mr. Chu has verified that his drop can be extended until June 30, 2020, not May 31, date that we had previously been advised. Before we move to board comments, I'd also like to take an opportunity to read the following. It is our goal as a school board to remain proactive, especially as it pertains to safety of our students and the administrative staff. To that end, the board recognizes that it is critical to always maintain an open line of communication. As information about coronavirus makes headlines across the globe, it's important that we all understand, and especially our stakeholders, that the district is being proactive. While the state of Florida confirms that there are no known cases of coronavirus in the state or here in Palm Beach County, let me say that again, the state of Florida confirms that there are no known cases of coronavirus in the state or here in Palm Beach County, but we have plans in place should cases begin to appear in our community. At this time, I'd like Dr. Fanoy to update us on the district's contingency plan. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Barbieri. Again, I would like to emphasize that the state of Florida confirms that there are currently no documented cases of coronavirus in Palm Beach County or in Florida. However, the school district of Palm Beach County is being proactive in following the CDC recommendations and guidelines in preparation for potential cases of the virus. Our district has been actively monitoring developments related to coronavirus since its inception. School district leadership is reviewing response plans accordingly in full compliance with the CDC and the Florida Department of Health. The district follows their guidance to ensure that all necessary resources and procedures are in place to address any potential coronavirus impact in our community. The school district has a robust, longstanding professional relationship with the health department and will work in close collaboration with all public health officials and governmental agencies throughout the state to provide guidance, promote awareness, and initiate response actions as needed. Today, the district also updated parents, guardians, and staff via email. As Mr. Barbieri mentioned, maintaining open lines of communications is paramount. Please also be advised that the school board will be updated on the district's infectious disease plan during the March 4th school board meeting by Mr. Paul Strauss and others. Before that time, if there are any changes to the current situation, you will be notified immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fanoy. Board members, also, the county commissioners, specifically Commissioner Berger, has invited us to a meeting on March 10 at 9:30. The county commission will be discussing the coronavirus, and they've suggested to us that we are all invited to attend that meeting, and they'll have seats available for us there in front of the dais. So if any of you would like to attend, that's March 10 at 9:30 a.m. in the chamber for the Board of County Commissioners in downtown West Palm Beach. With that said, board comments. Ms. McQuinn, do you have anything? Ms. Brill?
[inaudible]
Mrs. Andrews?
[inaudible]
Mr. Shaw? Okay, so, board members, we need to make a decision what we're going to do here with respect to, I know that a couple of you insisted that you wanted to see the vetting information on the people that were not included on the list, and Ray and Associates has indicated that they won't provide that to us. I've also been advised by our general counsel that those documents are public, as if we did it ourselves, so we could, if the board felt we should even go that far, we could do a public records request for the documents that Ray and Associates has. I'm not suggesting we do that, but that is an option. Ms. Brill?
You noticed me wince. So, I'm not really clear, and I didn't speak up about it at the time, but when we hire someone to recruit for us, and being a former HR person, I don't know that I really need to know why they shortlisted. You hire someone to do a job, you know, you have to trust the people that you hired. You know, if we requested that backup, it's open to the public too. I don't think that we really need to drill down into them. I looked at some of the ones that we received. Unfortunately, I don't have my documents with me, but, you know, I don't particularly need to see that because we entrusted the company that we sought to do the recruiting for us.
All right. Ms. McQuinn?
I agree with Mrs. Brill in adding the comment that we can individually read every one of the applicants. So unless we feel that an applicant who has not been recommended for us to consider, unless we disagree that they don't meet the qualifications, then I totally agree with what Mrs. Brill said.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and just that, I do have a candidate that I felt should have been in the process, and so as a result, I do want to know why, and I still stand firm on wanting those references when I hear that it's being said that they're not going to provide any more information to me as a board member before I make my selection. Based on what they've already given me, it's just not enough. I really want to know the quality of the candidate's performance in their present job, and even so, in some of their past positions. And I do depend on Ray and Associates to give me that, and so that should have been part of the discussion before we actually drill down, in my opinion.
Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. I agree with Mrs. McQuinn and Mrs. Brill. I think we have the information we need, and it seems to me from past searches that we've done that there have been times that the board has added somebody who was not on a list if it was the consent of the board, so I see no need for us to do anything different. So it's always an option for a board member to recommend somebody to be on that shortlist and see if they would be chosen.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Well, I think, under normal circumstances, I might agree with that with a little bit tweaking, but the way I read the email from Ray and Associates, and somebody can please feel free to correct me, is basically do it our way or no way, and I find that to be completely and utterly unsatisfactory. The other thing is, so, I take it as my responsibility to choose the best IG that I can, and the reason that I wanted to know why they screened certain people out was actually for my own educational purposes, right? I know that Ray and Associates, like, does this, I mean, I know that they search for superintendents. You know, I don't know their track record on searching for IGs, but certainly, I'm going to work under the assumption that they've searched for more IGs than I have. How about that? And I wanted to learn from this experience in order for me to make a more informed vote. Now, there were some people who were included that, at least from what I could see, had the same kind of credentials as at least one person who was not included, and so I need to understand that. If the consultant is not willing to help me understand that, then I, quite frankly, don't understand what purpose they are here to serve. So, given that, and, you know, this has been pretty much of a week of torment in trying to do a good job. I think if I didn't care, it would have been much easier, but it seems like that there was, there were at least a few steps that we could have done things better. And so of the options that Mr. Barbieri has outlined, I think that I am predisposed to go with terminate the current process and to revise the job description and start again. Now, in terms of revising the policy, I still agree with the comments from the last meeting where I would like the new IG to weigh in before we start changing the policy, but just the part that seems to be in conflict between the job description and the policy in terms of the qualifications required to be the IG, I think need to be addressed. The other thing is, I thought, it was actually surprising to me that the advertisement was so nonspecific, so, I mean, I just think that there's a lot of room for improvement. There's certainly a lot of room for me to learn in this process, and I would hope that we would work with people who want to help us be better decision-makers than what it appears is the case. So I'm fully prepared to terminate the current process. I have some confidence that our HR department knows what they're doing and does not need to lean on a third-party consultant, and certainly, I think that our HR department will work with us to be transparent and help us make the best decision possible.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Robinson, and you're right, we'd have to, in order to move forward again, we have to get rid of the conflict that's in the, between the policy and the job description with respect to when the person has to have the certification. So as we all discussed, we took off the 18-month, but the policy has the 18-month in there. So unless we put the job description back so it matches the policy, we're going to have to change the policy to take out the 18-month or put some other time period in. You want to?
So, I'm not gonna, I think that that's, for me, a little point. If we want to tweak the policy just on that, that narrow piece, that paragraph, I'm fine with doing that. It was my understanding that that was not necessary, but there's some other, in trying to revisit what I thought was a chaotic conversation at our last meeting and trying to tease out the issues, I think that there's some other, I think that we need to open those qualifications some and not just address the 18 months, and I'm happy to talk about that if and when we get to that point, but I'm fine with that. I'm not going to fight about not looking at the policy. If legal thinks that we need to tweak the policy, if we're going to tweak the job description, that's fine. I just, the way I read the information I received, I didn't think that that was necessary, but I do think that we need to basically start from scratch.
All right. Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and I do agree with Dr. Robinson for option 3, and as I looked at the job description, and maybe I missed it when it came by on 12/19, but I didn't see anything in that job description that talked about supervisory experience, and I don't know if I just missed it when it came through before, but as I read over it, I think there, I don't know how many employees there are up in the inspector general's office, but when I go up there, I know there's a crowd of people there that they have to supervise, and I didn't see that in the job description. So we really do need to look at the job description again because this is very important, that we get this right. This person will be a supervisor. Some of the folks that we may have in our packet here may not have supervised anybody, and so I really want to make sure that we select someone who has supervised people since that's the role that they will be playing here. And I just know that Ray had done a good job, Ray and Associates had done a good job with the selection process for Dr. Abosa, and I do like their work, but when I read the email, I think it was unnecessary to say that we're going to sever the ties if you have the questions to actually ask us, and we don't want to answer them. I think when we sign a contract with people that need to work with us and educate us on what they're doing, then we should be able to ask the questions. And so one of the things I really want to do is know about the people, not just on this piece of paper, but how well they're performing. I looked at some of the candidates, and they had only been in their jobs for one year, and they looked like they were moving from one to two years in a position to one year in a position and so on. That's the kind of thing, I would want to know what Ray knows about that kind of thing. It looked like some of them were on the run, but if I don't get a chance to ask somebody about that or see references, I don't want to be prioritizing people as number 1, 2, 3, and that's a bit of information I don't have. So it just really tells me that I need more information, and if they don't want to give it to me as a board member, then I don't really need to use their services, so, number 3.
All right. Mrs. McQuinn, you were next, and then Ms. Brill, but Mrs. Rico, you said you?
I just wanted to provide the board some guidance. It's in the policy. Section 4 is several paragraphs that govern appointment, term removal, vacancy qualifications, and evaluation of the inspector general, but the qualifications are embedded in particularly section E of that, of that section. So it's not just the narrow 18 months, but I think the inconsistencies were contained in section E. That was the guidance.
All right. Ms. McQuinn, then, Ms. Brill?
This is a question, but I'm also going to ask you before we finish this. I did not follow your, our third option, so I'm going to need to hear the third option again, but my question in terms of Ray and Associates is, why did we as a board decide we did not want to work with our own HR department in the first place? That's important to me to hear, if we've decided that now we can use them.
Yeah, at the time of the discussion, it was about making sure that there was clear independence between the HR department, the IG, and ultimately the board. So it was about making sure that there was clear independence, that this was an independent search and process, because ultimately, the IG is independent of all of us. Except the board.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you. So Dr. Fanoy kind of just led me into what I was going to talk about. With all due respect to my colleagues, I totally disagree. I think we've got a good group of applicants. I think that the process needs to have clear independence. I have no interest in micromanaging the process. I have no interest in delving into references prior to us shortlisting and us doing the interview. As an HR person, I know in the past, in the corporate world, you don't go to everyone's references before the interview. You know, I entrusted them with this job. I do regret that this board decided that they were not going to move forward with looking into using the county IG in a hybrid model. I think that we wouldn't be in this situation at this time had we gone that route. I understand that, but I really have no interest in starting over. I do believe that, you know, I understand the conflict between the certified inspector general and the 18 months, but if someone's a certified inspector general auditor or a certified inspector general investigator, I don't have a problem with them having 18 months to become a certified investigator general. And looking at the resumes, it does look like they have had supervisory experience. So for me, it's, with all due respect to our HR department, the inspector general is an independent entity, and so I really feel we have to keep it at arm's length and not be recruiting ourselves for that position.
Ms. McQuinn, then, Mr. Shaw?
The, under qualifications with our current inspector general policy, oh, 4E, thank you, Julie M., excuse me, general counsel, under qualifications, it does say the inspector general shall be selected on the basis of integrity, I'm not going to read them all, but capability for strong leadership. So that is in our current policy.
Was Mr. Shaw next, then, Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. I agree with Mrs. Brill on this, and that independence, I think, is critical, and I worry that if we start now changing job descriptions, tweaking job descriptions, we're going to be seen as trying to create a job description for individuals instead of having that independent, totally impartial selection and screening process. So I have no interest at all in readdressing any of this. I think the suggestion that Mrs. Brill had is fine.
Ms. McQuinn, you asked what option 3 said, so I'll read that one again, and again, I'm not recommending this one over the other options. I just threw these out for board consideration. Option 3 is terminate the contract with Ray and Associates and terminate the current process, modify the timeline, and revise the job description and IG policy so that the job description the board adopted at its December 18 meeting and the IG policy are not in conflict with one another with respect to the 18-month criteria, and begin the selection process again using our HR department or another search consultant. Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. I just want to be clear with my fellow board members. I certainly don't want to micromanage. I spent 20 years in human resources, and I did these type of processes in actually looking for superintendents and others, but I'm sitting here saying, I don't know any of these people, I don't have anything to do with anybody in this whole group, but I'm looking at some of the people who were screened out, and when I saw that some of those people had been in a school center and actually been doing some of that kind of work with schools, that they were screened out, and I don't know why. And I just feel like I would want to have the opportunity to ask the people that we're paying this money to, to do the search for those kinds of questions, and they're the ones that have them. I don't want to sit here blanketly and just not know that, and then I'm actually screening down to 1, 2, and 3 without having that information. And this has been very fast and robust, and I like that, but then when you come up to some issues that you really know you need to know about, then you need to know that. Maybe for other people feeling comfortable, I don't feel comfortable. It's a big position here in Palm Beach County. Independence, everything else matters. The person matters as to be able to be the fit for the school district of Palm Beach County. So the kinds of questions I'd like to ask is for my own edification so that when I do make a selection, I know what I'm doing, and right now, there's some pauses in that because I don't have some of the additional information that Ray and Associates can provide for me. Thank you.
General Counsel?
Thank you. I'm sure the board knows this, but anyone that wasn't on the list that Ray and Associates proposed, who's in the larger pool of candidates, can be moved onto the, onto the list as you deem appropriate, as the board deems appropriate.
Yes, Ms. McQuinn?
So at what point in this process, I'm just talking in terms of motions, can we, I don't want to know which individual board member would do it because I don't want to be influenced by that, but that we, you'll figure it out, that we can submit names of people that we think should have been brought forward, we interview the ones that Ray and Associates recommended, and additional, that as we read them, we interview them.
Sure. I think we can, we can make that decision tonight, what we want to do with that. One thing that I do want to point out, if you look at our job description that we published, forget about the 18-month thing, because that's, but one of the requirements is that under number 1, Roman numeral sub 3, that they must have, be a certified public account license, a certified public account license issued pursuant to chapter whatever of the Florida statute, or a certified internal auditor certificate, even the one that I think is the, well, I won't say that. We have one applicant who's, who's an inspector general for a very large district. He doesn't meet that requirement, so I'm not sure that any of the people in this are going to have everything that's on here, so we, we need to keep in mind that we're going to have to vary from the job description because that one has the certified inspector general position in a very large school district, but is not a certified public account or a certified internal auditor, so he doesn't meet the requirements as we posted them. So we, yeah?
We want to clarify that statement. If we may, a point of clarification, I think the qualification number 1 reads such that little Roman numeral I says what it says, and then says "or," 2 and 3, so it's either 1 or 2 and 3. 1 is a bachelor's degree, blah, 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 and then "or" is the master's degree and certified. I think that's the way it reads.
Mr. Barbieri? General Counsel? Do you have the job description in front of you? So read, would you read 1, paragraph 1, and tell us where the "or" and the "and" fit in, which ones are considered the "or's" and the "and's?", which ones are mandatory, and which ones are we select?
It's 1 or 2. Everything is 1 or everything is 2. What is 2?
So that's separate from what Mr. Mitchell just, how he interpreted it?
1 and 2, and 1 and 3 or 2.
Oh, okay.
Correct? Is that how it works?
So we have to consider that. I mean, we can certainly consider the six or seven that Ray and Associates brought to us, but based on that one, we may not have, you know, any, any that fit the requirements. Ms. Brill?
Thank you. So with all due respect to this process, I was told that we were having a meeting to discuss what has come up with Ray and Associates. I was not prepared, I did not bring in all the resumes because we were supposed to be shortlisting and discussing that next week, so I'm not prepared to go through, I know you had mentioned, make recommendations about those that were not included. I don't want to do that because I don't have them with me, and I'd have to go back and study it, so I just want to put that out there.
No, in fact, I didn't anticipate we were going to do that tonight. We were just going to figure out what we're going to do at the next meeting.
We're going to move forward, okay. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
So regarding Ray and Associates, now, again, maybe I need somebody to interpret the email for me?
They're on the phone with us, I believe, so they can.
Okay, well, maybe they can interpret it, because the way I read the email is, we follow their process or out, right? So the way I read it, if we, if I voted, if I made a motion and it passed to add, you know, candidate, you know, 1, 2, 3 to the list of people to be considered shortlisted, that that would be a violation of their policy and basically they would want, would not want to play with us anymore.
Could I speak to that?
Certainly. Who, identify yourself for the record, please.
Sure. Dr. Mary Fosbender with Ray and Associates.
And Ryan Ray with Ray and Associates is on as well as Molly Shortoff from our office. So we would love to be able to answer a bunch of different things for you. So Mary, go ahead.
So your legal counsel is exactly interpreting in a way we would. We have, during our searches, the board frequently decide that they want to add a candidate in, that is totally your prerogative. That, it sounds like that's not something that would be done today based upon board's preparation for so choosing, but we would stand 100% behind that, so that, that is not anything that we put in the contract letter that we sent to you that, that would be problematic. that we sent to you that would be problematic.
Okay. Other questions, Dr. Robinson? Ms. McQuinn?
So having read the, I think we got it tonight, the advertisement. Did the advertisement include the qualifications?
Oh, General Counsel?
Thank you. I know that Dr. Robinson had posed the question to Ray and Associates. They had sent a copy of the actual ad language that was posted. The ad language had a link to Ray and Associates' website. And when we pulled that up, it had the job description that included the policy language as well, referenced, referenced above.
Yes, ma'am.
So follow-up. Initially, I, when I go back at the points I took away from our last meeting until we decided not to revise the policy right now, then that changed my thinking. I would, but I do think we need to make sure that we, and we can do that soon, that we look at the actual job description. Let's be clear that our job description parallels with our qualifications. Does that make sense?
You mean, parallels with the policy? Is that what you mean?
I'm not talking, okay. The job, okay, this that we have, right?
What you're referring to, the job description that's published?
That is the job description? Well, great. Then we just have to make sure that our qualifications are in line with that, right?
Right. If we modify that, if we modify that in a way, General Counsel, didn't you advise me that most all of that is in the policy so that we'd have to figure out how to do a small modification of the policy? Not anything huge, but just to make sure that whatever job description we want to post is not conflicting with the policy provisions that are already there that we adopted? General Counsel, answer that, please, and then Ms. McQuinn.
The way the policy, the way the policy is, I'll start with the job description. The job description has embedded on the top of it the reference to, the general reference to our school board policy 1.092. Within policy 1.092, there contains a section that talks about qualifications. The qualifications section is not word for word what is written in the job description. So you would have to read them both together arguably to identify all of the requirements. And currently, there is a conflict between the face of the job description that says the inspector general certification upon appointment and the policy that says within 18 months. And then there's a little bit of wordage after that that may suggest, depending on how you read it, that it's even longer than 18 months possibly.
Ms. McQuinn?
So from my perspective, I'm not comfortable with tweaking the policy to fit with what we want to have happen here. So I would rather follow our policy. We don't have to hire a person if, when we interview them, we're not happy. So when we put, I know that we specified, myself included, that I wanted an experienced inspector general. However, again, at the time, I thought we'd be looking at policy. So for me, I want to follow our policy.
I guess I agree with you, but the only problem is we have to abide by the published policy, which means we've got to change the job description the way we published it, right, General Counsel?
So.
Yes, what are you shaking your head on, Ms. Brill?
No, because I thought she said that differently. Let her explain it to me.
The job description deleted the 18-month, which is in conflict with the policy. So we have to fix that before we.
Well.
If we're going to start again, we have to fix it.
If you start again, if you're going to.
If we're going to go with what we have, then we just go with what we have.
If you go with what you have, the job description stated that in accordance with policy 1.092 at the top of it. So therefore, as I had indicated in my memo, that this broader reading is contained in the policy. And as I understand it, and I didn't discuss this with Ray and Associates and ask them and answer, get the actual answer to this question, but assuming that they posted, which they did, the job description with the policy reference on it and that they accepted candidates that were governed by the policy, meaning that they would be able to get the qualification within 18 months, we're still complying with our policy and the job description as publicized. And the candidates theoretically all could have applied. And then the board decides whether, in their discretion, they prefer to have somebody who has the certification as a preferred, as a preferred qualification.
Okay, so let me ask a follow-up question. Again, I don't care which way we go on this, honestly, I don't. But if there's nine things listed in the qualifications and none of the candidates have all nine of them, General Counsel, can we still hire one of them if they don't meet the qualifications as published?
If somebody doesn't have the minimum qualifications, then they would not be eligible to be considered. I mean, you know, I'm talking about the all of the qualifications. If they are not meeting a required qualification as posted, then that person would not be meeting the qualifications and you would not be hiring them. I mean, that's the way your job, your job advertisements work.
So I suggested the board, if we're going to move forward with the six or seven, I'm not sure how many we currently have. I thought it was seven, but then I heard there were six. Then we would ask Ray and Associates or HR, somebody, to check off the box and let us know that the candidates comply with all nine of the qualifications on here. And again, I'm concerned about one of them that looks very qualified, doesn't have Roman numeral one, three. So I'm not sure how we deal with that. Because what if we find none of them have all nine? I guess what you're saying is we can't consider any of them.
What I'm saying is, and this is HR hiring 101, right? If you have an applicant who does not meet the qualifications and you hire that applicant over individuals who do meet the qualifications, you're going to be exposed to some type of, you know, allegation of discriminatory practice. That's the bottom line.
Okay. Ms. Brill, and then Mrs. Andrews.
Thank you. And so, and I apologize for shaking my head, but that was the gist of our conversation last night when I spoke to General Counsel, is that the job description does say in accordance with the school board policy. So that would give us the latitude. But I want to revert back to what Mr. Shaw said with regard to changing the job description because it could be perceived as us changing it for a person. And so my suggestion would be that since we can add other people who we have received the resumes of, that we go back and take a look at them, see who else we might want to add, and that we continue the process as we have started.
Okay, so if we do that, Ms. Brill, just a question. So would we ask Ray and Associates who are on the phone to tell us whether those people that we want to select, including the six that they're already bringing us, meet all nine of these? Or do we want HR to do that at this point to tell us, you know? Because it's not clear from what Ray and Associates gave us with these handouts that we can determine on our own whether or not these individuals have these. And I guess that's one of the things they want to discuss with us is the qualifications of the six, which I understand that they could do. But if there's other ones that you want to add, we need somebody's cooperation, either HR to help us with this or Ray and Associates, so that.
So is my response, if that's directed to me, is if we're continuing with Ray and Associates, they can create a matrix and let us know. Or I have no problem with whoever provides that information. You know, this isn't House Hunters or House Hunters International where you check off some of them and then have X's through the others. It's very important that we do get the right person. But I would like us to find a way to make this work and to proceed.
Mrs. Andrews and Dr. Robinson?
And I still say that I want to do it correctly. I'm not in a hurry to get this done. And I said it last week, I want to do it correctly. I spent quite a bit of time talking to our attorney that's up in the IG office. I've spent quite a bit of time talking to Mr. Chu. And some of the things I heard, based on this, the job description and our policy, a lot of people would have been involved in this process with us if we had been clear on the front end. And so now I see that we are trying to clear it up for people, but we missed a lot of people. And just looking in this packet of somebody that I saw that was screened out, I'm really concerned about that. But when I think about all this discussion we had about different people that we wanted to come here to be the IG from right here in the county, some of those people wouldn't even qualify for some of the things that we're talking about. That's why we have to get it right. And once we get it right, I think, and take the time to do it correctly, then you don't miss out on anybody. I don't have anybody in mind that I'm looking for. But I want to make sure that people that are actually applying for this know exactly what the qualifications are and the requirements from the job description as well as the policy.
Dr. Robinson, before I call on you, Mr. Ray, that you're on the phone, let me ask you a question. If you're not willing to share the information publicly with the board, would you be willing to speak with each one of the board members individually to answer questions with respect to different candidates as to why they were screened out so that you could have those calls with board members separately, which I understand from the General Counsel is an option that you would have, that you could speak to each of us individually without having any two of us on the phone at the same time? Would you be willing to do that?
Yes, sir, I would. Absolutely.
So is the board then understand that we will get the background information, Dr. Robinson and Mrs. Andrews, that you wanted with respect to all 18 candidates? But they'll do that individually rather than publicly at a board meeting telling us why they vetted people out? Sure.
We remember this is exactly the way we did it when we hired Mr. Abosa.
And thank you. Just to follow up with Mr. Ray, I don't know what kind of conversation you've had with the folks that put the paperwork in. But as I said, I really went through these carefully and I saw that some of the folks had only been in their job maybe one year, a little less, and it seems like a combination of them moving from place to place to place. I don't know if you know that or that they just answered the ad, you compiled the information, or have you spoken with anybody so that what you're giving us, you know, is truly the quality that we need? And if we're talking to you, would you have those kinds of answers?
Well, they have to fill out the application and attest that they're answering truthfully. And what they're doing in the applications that you all have is they're indicating what their work experience history is and what are the dates they've been in those positions. So that should stand as accurate based on their attesting that that is correct.
Dr. Robinson?
So I believe that I just heard Ms. Brill talk about a matrix, which is what I think I asked for last week, which is what I interpret they're saying, we're not giving you, right? And I cannot find what I would consider to be a reasonable explanation for that. So let me just, let me quit trying to look for it. If Mr. Ray or someone from Ray and Associates would tell me why, why there is resistance to creating the matrix that was requested now, I think, for the second time at a minimum, that would list the qualifications on the X-axis and the names of the individuals on the Y-axis and just simply check, they met their qualification or they didn't? I need to understand that. Why, why is there resistance to that?
Mr. Ray, can you answer that? Would you provide us with that so that you can identify for us which of these candidates meets all of the requirements by putting a check mark and saying, yes, they meet one through nine and check them off so that we know? Because it's impossible for us to look at the resumes that you provided to us and to make that determination ourselves.
One of the things that we are trying to do, and we always do, is to protect the board, protect our candidates as well. And we certainly wouldn't want any public ranking of candidates. That's our concern.
I'm sorry. Can I get a clarification? You want to protect who?
We want to, one of the things that we always strive to do is to protect the board, protect the candidates as well. And so what we are saying is we don't want to have you publicly ranking candidates.
No, I don't think, I don't think, Mr. Ray, I don't think we're asking for you to publicly rank them for us. We just want to know, we have nine qualifications. You've heard us discuss tonight with the General Counsel that unless they meet all nine of those, we really can't even consider them because they don't meet the minimum qualifications for the job. So all we're asking you is if you would take the six or seven, whichever ones you're giving us, plus whatever other ones that the board members want to throw in and just list for us whether they meet one through nine, which there's nine job description qualifications on our published job description.
I'd like to clarify my request.
Dr. Robinson, go ahead. Excuse me, one minute.
My request actually was that every applicant be listed there. And then I, and I don't know, I don't know. I have to work on my vocabulary because I thought I made this clear last week that each candidate would be, each applicant would be listed and just simply yes or no, check, check, check. I don't know if that's House Hunters International. I don't watch the show. I would like to see a visual that just says yes. Because I believe, without having the expertise and experience in HR that Ray and Associates and others have, it appears to me that there are people who were quote, "screened in" who do not meet all the qualifications. And from what I can tell, there's at least one who was screened out. I'm assuming that there is a reason for that that I'm just not yet able to understand. And I would hope that we could receive such a matrix from our consultants that would just simply say, yes or no, they had, person X meets, has this, 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 not this, but has the other. I just need a visual.
I think the onus for the request that you're making would be similar to what we did when it came to the certification, when we posed that as an email to the candidate. We would send out an email. We would put all nine items that are on the qualifications list of the job description and have the candidates respond to each one, one, you know, after the other. And we've already discussed with you that we're happy to meet by phone and explain to you why we have not included certain candidates. That's not a problem. But I'm also hearing a number of board members who don't want to go that direction. So I think we just need to know what the general consensus of the board is. But my recommendation from our perspective would be that we would put that onus on the candidates to say a response to each of those qualifications and not on us. It's a clerical thing, but it is also an onus thing.
So can you provide us with the 18 responses from the 18 candidates that said, yes, 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 I do and I don't on these three or whatever so that we know who said yes and no? So we know which ones have all nine and which ones don't?
I didn't, I didn't say we do it for all 17. I said we would do it for the seven because I didn't hear that as a request of the majority of the board.
Agreed.
Well, at this point, the board hasn't spoken by majority vote because we don't have a vote on the table. So we're in discussions. Dr. Robinson and then Ms. Brill. I'm sorry, Ms. Brill first, then Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. And so, first of all, I'm not, I don't really, I particularly don't necessarily need to see with the ones that weren't shortlisted. I think we can identify who in that packet that wasn't shortlisted, who were going to move forward. And then it's only the ones that were going to move forward that I'd be interested in knowing if they met the qualifications. But I do want to clarify that, number two, the inspector general shall hold an appointment a current certification as a certified inspector general. We need to clarify, because our policy does say the 18 months, that someone who's an inspector general auditor or someone who's an inspector general investigator would meet that criteria. I don't want someone to be, for us to say no because our policy says they have 18 months. So we would need to clarify that if we are going to be getting some type of matrix or some type of document saying who meets the qualifications. It's in our policy, so.
I mean, if you're going to just say that people that are CIGA and CIGI qualify because they have 18 months to get it, there might be an auditor out there that's in a big organization that could also get it within 18 months. So, so I mean, Dr. Robinson?
So if we could, maybe we can kind of itemize our topics. So first, I just want to talk about what has been done by Ray and Associates. So if you did not screen using our job description, then whatever tools you use to screen, whatever criteria you use, how about put that in the matrix for me? I want to understand what you saw in the candidates that were screened in and screened out. Then I guess I could add my own columns that would include the bullet points in our job description. But the point of the matter is, we're in Florida, the sunshine state, and we talk about transparency? And I expect transparency from the consultant as well. And I really don't understand. as well. And I really don't understand, I still do not understand the resistance. And so whatever way you screened, I would like for that to be outlined in the matrix.
I think we put a written explanation of our vetting process to you. Do you not have that?
It is not in front of me. I would like to look at criteria, bullet pointed criteria. For example, if you said they need to have a bachelor's degree in accounting, for example, okay, that's one of the columns on the matrix. Whatever tools you use to screen.
Mr. Ray, did, did you, did you look at the nine qualifications and the six people that you brought to us? Is it your opinion that they meet all nine of the qualifications? Because otherwise, as you heard our general counsel say, they really can't be shortlisted because they don't meet the minimum requirements. So can you just tell us whether or not you know that the six people, let's start with those six, those six people that you're bringing back to us have all nine of the qualifications? Do we know that? Do you know that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, but I believe only one has all nine, correct?
That's my understanding as well. That's why I suggested that we put the onus on the candidates, put out all nine of those to them and get them to reply to each one individually.
Which I think is fair.
Well, it's, maybe, maybe you think it's fair, and I'm not being sarcastic, but the general counsel has just told us that unless they meet all nine of the qualifications, that they can't, we can't consider them. So then at this point, you're telling us if there's only one, that's the only one we can shortlist to because that's the only one that meets the qualifications?
Well, I think we too had the, the issue in the back of our mind that these candidates, if they had most of the qualifications, had a certain length of time in which to finish the rest of them. So I think that's where the, the conflict lies because that was something that we published in the advertisement.
I think that only, that's only with respect to the time for getting the certified inspector general status, which I think we all agreed at this point, based on the policy, is 18 months. But with respect to the other eight, there is no indication by the board ever that we were going to wait for any period of time after we appointed for them to get anything else, like their certified public accountant license or anything else. I mean, that's not something we ever discussed. So, general counsel?
No, I think you said it. Thank you.
And I need to say it too.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yeah, because guess what? In human resources, we can screen in and we screen out. And if you have not met those qualifications, you're not moving forward. It worries me that these people that didn't meet it are in this list and there are people in this universe out there that would have applied if they had known this would be given as an opportunity. I don't know anybody, I don't know any inspector generals around, so I'm not talking about anybody in particular. But just the process itself needs to be clean and we need to take our time and do it correctly. I, I, I believe in Rand Associates and thank you for what you've done. But right now, we're in a, a, a problem situation and people are looking at how we're doing this. And yes, X out there said, oh, my gosh, if I had known that that was the generalities of it, I would have put my name in the pot. And they did not. So, you know, we have to be fair and equitable for people. We need to get it straight and do it right. And I keep saying that.
I, I hear you absolutely. And I think the best solution is the one that I offered, which is to have us send this out to each of the candidates, have them reply, promise to get that back to you by Friday, and then you have the information that you need.
Dr. Robinson?
So it seems to me, if I'm following this conversation, that we have cast a net and we've only gotten one fish to qualify. And that if we were to move forward and hire anyone else, there's potentially, we're in trouble for not following the rules we created. I mean, honestly, and then, so you know, hindsight's supposed to be 2020. I'm going to say on this issue, mine is probably like 2040. But I've been trying to dig into this and I've been looking at job descriptions for IGs like all over the nation. But you know, if I read, if I'm reading the bio correctly, our county's IG would not meet the qualifications we have in our job description. He was in, I think it was law enforcement and then walked into IG land, the way I read it. But, and so in addition to not having caught enough candidates that, that we could legally consider, right? I think that we may have narrowed our focus too much. Now, listen, I don't, I don't know, I don't have somebody in my hip pocket that I want. I just know I want to get the best person and somebody who will be here a long time. And so I, I still believe, like, and I, with or without Rand Associates, I think that we need to back up and look at our job description. If that means the policy, then so be it. But I think that we need to look at the job descriptions of IGs across the nation, right? You know, I wish I had on my notes. I looked at Miami Dade, Miami Dade and is, and Broward, both have attorneys, federal prosecutor. I don't know that I want a federal prosecutor. But, but the point is, is if we should just, maybe we just need to back up. And since we're at this point, it seems that we either hire the one person, whoever that is, that met all the criteria, or we need to start again. That's, that's what I think I'm gathering from this conversation. And if I am wrong on the legal points, I need General Counsel to specify. Well, I think I need General Counsel to either correct me or, or affirm that I'm not going down the wrong path on the public record, please.
I, I feel like.
No, I need to hear from my General Counsel, please.
Mrs. Rico, please first.
Thank you. With respect to the backup, any backup documents utilized to vet the candidates, to score the candidates, to develop a criteria, any records, documents that were created by our consultant is by contract as well as by law, are documents. And they would further be public records with any exceptions and exemptions for things that would be otherwise confidential to be disclosed to the general public. And that's what it says in the contract, and that's what the law is. And so at the, I mean, in the contract, at the conclusion of the contract, all those documents are to be sent to us anyway. The board is now asking for those early, and I don't really see any legal impediment to providing those to the board.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just simply add.
So but to our General Counsel, the, what I needed to make sure that I'm understanding correctly from this conversation is, we would actually be putting ourselves in a potential legal jeopardy, that's probably not the right word, if we hired someone that did not meet all of the criteria of our job description while not hiring somebody who did. That's what I thought I heard. So I need to understand if that's correct.
That is correct because both our job description and policy say shall in the qualifications, shall meet.
Okay.
Could I speak for a second?
Yeah, yeah, hold on. Our HR wants to talk to us first. Mary, hold on one minute.
We just wanted to ask one point of clarification of Rand Associates if we can, because I think what we heard was one candidate qualifies for the nine. Is that one qualifies for the nine as of today? Because that item number two, to Ms. Brill's point, says shall hold at time of appointment. So is that one, one candidate of the six or seven holds it right now? But could others hold it at time of appointment? I just want to make that part of the discussion if that may be germane.
No, it's a very fair question. I think it's in our best interest and your best interest that we not eliminate any candidates. We're saying to the best of our ability, we believe there's only one that has all nine of these. But I would reissue the offer to be able to ask all the candidates that question so we don't lose any candidates if in fact they are qualified and you wish to consider them and have them respond and get that back to you in a timely fashion.
General counsel?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify. The only qualification that can be verified or, or demonstrated in the future is the certification as a certified inspector general because our policy gives it an additional 18 months. Beyond that, every other qualification is a shall. But what I would suggest is, this is a really complicated job description. It has a lot of and ors and a lot of different kinds of qualifications. And so I do think that it would be very helpful to sort that out on a paper so that we can look at it. And, because I, I hesitate saying what is and what isn't making somebody qualified. So I, whoever does that, I would suggest that that, that that exercise be done so it can be looked at.
Mr. Chu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a section in our policy under qualification, in the middle of it, it says that more specifically, the inspector general shall be selected consistent with the minimum requirements established for state inspector general as provided in section 20.055. Don't forget, the law could have been changed since we have our first policy drafted. So if we're going to do it, we want to make sure the new one, all the requirements be consistent. That's what the policy requires, so.
Mrs. Andrews, Dr. Robinson, and Ms. McQuinn.
I know you don't want me to say it anymore. We've got to get it right. If we don't even have all the current documents, as Mr. Chu is talking about, the latest Florida statute that ties into this, that's a problem. And then if we get a matrix to clarify for us and for these seven, what about all those other people that were confused because of this? We've got to be clean and clear and fair when we try to get the right people for the job. They still have to produce whatever we come up with. But if we're going to be changing it to make it clear for these, these people here and all the other folks who are confused with it, then they missed an opportunity. And when I, I've talked to a lot of people since last week, and we're not looking good because we're continually trying to push it and force it. I was happy to know that Mr. Chu could stay here until June 30th. I don't know why. I'm in a hurry not to get it, to rush it. I want to get it right. And we have some, we have an office that's very viable, that's been outstanding and doing the work. Let's get this right.
I know, Dr. Robinson, Ms. McQuinn is second next. But Mr. Ray, let me just ask you a question. So you've indicated that, or Molly indicated that you're willing to have, have the candidates tell us whether they have all nine of the qualifications. Are you willing to give, give us that information for the ones that were screened out, just so we know that they were screened out because they don't meet one of our qualifications? You don't have to give us any of the dirt behind it, although I can't imagine that anybody would apply for inspector general for the 10th largest school district in the United States if they have dirt in their past and they expect that it's not going to come out in a, in a public hearing like this where we're looking at their background. So are you willing to at least look at the other ones and tell us whether or not they meet all nine of the qualifications? And just tell us, Mr. Jones, who we didn't screen in, doesn't meet qualifications five through seven. Just can you give us that so we understand who met the nine qualifications and who didn't? And maybe none of the 18 will meet them. I don't know. But can you, can you do that for us? Because I think that would satisfy the board and we'd be done with this. Mr. Ray?
Verbally, yeah. Verbally, yes, we would.
Okay, so you would do that.
So we would, we would basically send out these nine qualifications to them in an email and have them respond to each one. And then tally that for you, for what you're asking. Is that correct?
Dr. Robinson, you think that that's not what you asked for?
Oh, I know that's not what I asked for. I, I specifically asked for a matrix in writing, right? And so, but now, so let me just put a pause on that because, I mean, I think we've only asked them, I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
So generally, when you have a consultant, you work together to get the job done. I've requested this matrix of information multiple times today, last week. I don't know why that's so hard. But you know what? I'm going to, I want to just put that in the, in the parking lot, like they say. I want to talk about the job description because to Mrs. Andrews' point about doing it right, I, I get, I'm, listen, I'm at least as frustrated as everybody else here, right? And it's too important a position to, to rush through and make do. We, we have issues with the job description being in conflict with the policy. I now see what I consider to be limiting qualifications in the job description, right? And so I would like to have more time, I would actually like the professionals to help with, with gathering information about the qualifications for IGs in other areas. So we can just pause and then take a look at it. Because this, our current job description is, is basically audit dependent, right? We went from having an auditor to an IG. I don't, I, I suspect that we wrote the job description for Mr. Chu. I'm, now, I don't have clear recollection of that, right? But now that we have, we're at this point of, of change, I think that we need to just pause and back up and, and take the information that I suspect we all have learned in the recent past and reevaluate our job description. It appears that we have a bare minimum of a month grace period, like, so we don't have to rush on the same timeline. I, I would not want to exclude anybody that has been shortlisted by Rand Associates. But I need to understand why people were included and other ones were not. And not get myself in a legal predicament that says, that, that puts me in a position of thinking somebody who doesn't have all the qualifications advertised is better than somebody who, who does have all of them and then setting ourselves up for a lawsuit. I just want us to back up and get this thing right, which starts with the job description.
Ms. McQuinn and Ms. Brill.
So going back to the policy, could we just revise number 4E that states the qualifications? If we just do that part?
So I hear what you're saying. At first, I need somebody to make me understand really why that's in the policy. But never mind, let's pretend it should be there. It still needs to be in alignment with the job description, right? So which one are we, which one do we choose? And my point is, our current job description, both this listing qualifications in the policy and the job description itself for 70405, I think now based on information I'm learning, is too narrow and really is just looking for auditor to convert to a IG. And I think we need to, since we're at this point of apparently only having one person that's technically, that we know meets all the qualifications, we should not put ourselves in that, in that bind. It's an opportunity for us to pause, back up, look in, look at the qualifications for IGs around the country, and then as a deliberative body, discuss that, tweak our job description, re-advertise. I'm sure everybody that screened in can, they can screen in again. But then we're not in a position where if we hire somebody who, that we leave the door open for others to sue us because we have broadened and, and tweaked it, I think may, maybe even, maybe have fewer shells and ands, but that's to be wordsmith later. So I, I just think it's important that we change the language, both in the job description and the qualifications listed in the policy.
No, I wasn't finished. So the, so if we would, obviously, to me, policy is the law that we, well, we write a policy to abide by the law. And so then, yes, it follows that we would make the job description, go along with that. And I do have one more, something's concerning me that I've heard in a few comments tonight. We have, and it's somewhere in all this paper, because I did read it all, there's somewhere that there has to be coordination, we're expecting it, of our inspector general, that the, that the IG's office, general counsel's office, Office of Professional Standards, they got together in a room, we all know that, and couldn't come away with a consensus. Well, I need to know we're not going to each individual office. And I, I want to, I want, I'm going to use the word. want, I'm going to use the word transparency, I want transparency in that cooperation, that we don't currently have.
Just to respond to, to Ms. McQuinn, the only issue that we were, when we were having those sessions with the district staff members, we weren't talking about these qualifications. So I don't think, I don't think that that's going to be an issue. The board sets that policy, and the law is the law. The board sets the policy, and we, and we do what the board thinks. One of the problems I see here is, we've got those bachelor's degree in accounting, you know, we've got those three things in here, and we are limiting, because, you know, I look at some of the other qualifications around the state, Mr. Chu showed me a few, and there's like, federal law enforcement officers, and, you know, and all of that stuff that, that they would consider, but that's not in our policy, because we're not allowed to have those. So we would at minimum need to fix those things. So I agree with you. Ms. Ms. Brill was next, I think, and then Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. So I think we're, we're just going around in circles, really, with our conversation. And so, you know, I personally would prefer to wait to change the policy, as was suggested at the last meeting, when we have someone on board. I think that Ray and Associates has offered to individually speak to us about why they had eliminated some people. We don't know, maybe more than one person does meet the qualifications, they are not, they really don't know that at this point. I would say, let's give it a rest for a week, see where we come back, let people talk to Ray and Associates. I think that the audit committee did review the resumes, they, our audit committee didn't come back and say, "You don't have qualified candidates," right? We wanted the audit committee to come back and to, to give us feedback. They didn't just say, you know, "We don't think this is right, move on." I would prefer that we give it a week, let people talk to Ray and Associates, let's see who meets the qualifications, and come back and regroup, because we're really not getting anywhere.
No, we're not. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. I think the only reason that we're here tonight, having this disagreement, is because when the policy was originally written, we have probably one of the worst policies that exists for an IG. And to be specific, I think there are provisions in that, in the IG policy, first of all, a policy shouldn't have the job description and qualifications as part of a policy. We have, and we have expanded the role to the point that we've had multiple issues of due process and, and compliance issues that have put it difficult for the IG's office to even enforce the policy. I think we've got situations in the policy that's in conflict with the superintendent's duties, as well as the superintendent's contract. I could go on for a long time. So I think we're in, I think that's why we're here, because we don't have a good policy that we, that we have just almost no way to enforce. So I, I honestly agree with Mrs. Brill on this one, to take it. So I move that we table this item until next week, and, and have the general counsel and HR review the issues that have been brought by the board, related to Ray and Associates, to try to get all of these answers.
All right. It's been seconded by Ms. Ms. Brill, and there's, if I remember correctly, there's no discussion on a ta, on a motion to table, so we need to take a vote, all in favor of tabling until next week, to give Ray and Associates, which I understand, Mr. Shaw, you're saying that they'll come back with the six, and not the other ones?
Well, whatever they come back with, based upon the conversations the board-
No, the, the motion needs to be clear. I mean, we're asking for them to come back with, the, the six that they're giving us are all 18. I mean, there's been discussion by both, the board members on both of those, so.
Well, I, I think that, because board members, we're indicating 18, I don't care if we have 18 or eight, so, eight, all 18, that's fine.
Can I modify that, please? I would just modify it, that the board members that, that we look and see who else we would like to put in that group, I don't know that I need all 18, because there were some that were clearly not the right fit. So I would just say that, you know, we should allow the board members to let Ray and Associates know who else they're interested in, and then give it to us based on those people. Let's have till the end of the week, to let them know what other people we want to include, rather than waste their time for people that are just not qualified for it.
And Mr. Shaw accepts that as, as a modification of the motion. So-
I'd like to modify the motion.
Dr. Robinson.
And I would add to that, to, and to ask our own HR staff to provide to us a table of information on the qualifications of a representative sample of inspector generals around the country. Does the maker accept it?
Maker accept that? That's fine. Second?
Okay, I, I have more discussion going on, then.
We can't, we, there's no discussion on the table, and we can, you might, keep modifying the motion, but once the motion is out there, all we can do is modify-
So the motion, as I heard it, was that we table it for a week. That's what I want to discuss. I don't want to table the policy part for, I want us to have a decision. I don't want to table this for a week, so.
Then, then we'll vote again, then you're going to have to vote against the motion, so that we, all right? So are we clear what the motion is, at this point? Can you repeat it back to us? In front of your microphone?
But I want to thank Dr. Robinson.
Okay. Go ahead.
Do we vote on Dr. Robinson's first, and then?
No.
It's, it's all an amendment to the same motion. Mr. Shaw made a motion to table the, the discussion that you're having, to allow Ray and Associates to advise board members on the information they've requested, and for general counsel and HR to provide a table of...
Me?
Yeah.
Mine was just, actually, I don't remember throwing general counsel in that, but a table of the qualifications of representative sample of inspector generals across the nation.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Opposed? I see hands, please, opposed to the motion. Opposed?
Motion to table for a week?
Motion to table for a week. Opposed to the motion to table for a week? Hands up, if you, if you're in favor of the motion to table for a week. Keep your hands, your hands are going up and down, so just, if you're in favor, put your, put your, please change, stop changing your mind, just-
Favor of table.
In favor of tabling for a week, keep your hands up, so I can see who we are. Mr. Shaw and Ms. Brill, not in favor. Ms. McQuinn, Mrs. Andrews, Dr. Robinson, and myself.
Now, here we go.
Okay, so, so we're not going to table. So, Mr. Ray, just to get back, board members, you need to understand, if we're going to modify the policy, that's not something that's going to be done in a week. I mean, we have to have the whole process, it's going to take a couple of months to get through that process. General Counsel.
Thank you. We looked at the schedule, modifying the policy would require, if we got started now and brought something forward in the next couple of weeks to board meeting, it would probably get to adoption, if it stayed on track by June 3rd board meeting. Having said that, my recommendation would be to, because looking at the whole entire policy and corollary policies, do a broad comprehensive redo of this policy, we don't have enough time to do that by June 3rd, right? So if we're just talking about the policy as to qualifications, so that you can move forward this process, if the board wishes to change this job description, okay, my suggestion to streamline would be to remove, the policy change would be simply delete Section E all the way to Section F of the policy, as currently read, so we're not squabbling over policy, it's streamlined, it's in the pipeline, it's two reads, boom, boom, June 3rd, that's out. And then you change your job description with freedom to, and flexibility to make it read how you want it.
Okay, so general counsel, can we do the, can we start the process by changing the job description before we ever get to the policy, so they're both done at the same time?
So long as, from a legal standpoint, okay, if you start your policy delete process, that will be fine, so long as whatever job description you come up with is advertised, and that's the snapshot, and that's what you advertise, and that's your qualification, and you stick with that, and don't change it.
Okay, because in order, in order to, we deleted out of the qualifications, and then we have to start on June 3rd, coming up with the qualifications, and then we're going to be into August before we get to-
No, 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 no. Because qualifications should not be embedded in a policy in the first place.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, but I mean, by the time the board has meetings and decides, after they look at all the policies around the country, what they want in the qualifications, that's going to take a lot of time after June 3rd to finish that up, especially with the summer break. So during this period of time, we're waiting to take this out of the policy, can we start working on the job description?
What I'm saying is, you immediately start revising the job description.
Got it, that was my question.
And as soon as you finish and vote on a new job description, that's what you advertise. So the timeline for advertising will be dictated by this.
Okay. Dr. Robinson, you want to make a motion and do it slowly, so the clerk can get it?
Slowly. Okay, so my motion is that we table further discussion for one week, to ask HR staff and our consultant to bring us back a matrix of characteristics for inspector generals from a representative sampling across the nation, so that the board can discuss revisions in our inspector general job description, as well as begin the process of deleting the qualifications from the IG's policy.
Mr. Barbie, just a clarification, and we're talking about school district IGs, correct?
That was not part of my motion.
Okay.
But I, but I really would like to see them, more school district IGs as part of that, if that makes sense. I don't want to be prescriptive, but, yeah.
So before, okay, so before you second it, you included Ray and Associates in there, they may say they don't want to be involved with this. I mean, you can actually ask the superintendent to direct HR to do that, but we can't demand that Ray and Associates, at this point, comes up with that information. That's even not close to part of their contract, because you want to probably delete them out of the-
I'd be happy to.
Correct.
Okay, correct, by Mr. Ray. Okay, that's seconded by Dr. Robinson, okay?
By Mrs. Andrews.
By Mrs. Andrews, I'm sorry. There's no discussion on this one, so all in favor? Opposed? One member in opposition, Mrs. McQuinn, so the motion is five in favor and one opposed. So I believe, I believe-
Mr. Chairman, all the committee is scheduled to be tomorrow, so that means the meeting is off. And do you have further notice?
Point of, point of clarification, you still have an open pending solicitation process going on, so I think you need to address what we're doing with that.
So at this point, I, it's obvious that we need to stop the solicitation, until we revise the job description and get through the whole change. So at this point, I think we need to pay Mr. Ray for the work they've already done, and stop the process, before we go any further. Ms. Brill?
I would like, though, for us to, once we clarify that, to continue with Ray and Associates, because again, I like the independence of having somebody from the outside handling this, because we do need to be transparent. I don't think that HR here should be the, the group that does the recruiting and the hiring.
Can we wait until we get to that point, before we decide on-
But I think we need to find out from Ray and Associates, after all of this conversation, if they're willing to, to work with us.
Ms. Ms. McQuinn?
We are always willing to work.
Yeah, there was some time that, that, Mary, I believe is her name, we never let her finish what she was going to say. So if we can hear what they're willing to do, I agree with Mrs. Brill, if, let's hear what they're willing to do.
My understanding, from your motion that passed, and from your discussion here, for a second consideration of a motion, is that you are thinking of paying us for what we've done so far, stopping the process, and then would you still want us to solicit the information from the candidates who applied, or are you going to simply reopen the entire search? And if so, yes, Mr. Ray and I are willing to continue to work with you.
General Counsel.
Thank you. Just as a point of information and clarification, if the board is going to begin modification of the job description, you, you can't keep going with this current solicitation process, because it's a different job description. So you need to do something with the current process, as in terminate it.
Dr. Robinson.
I make a motion to terminate the current process.
Seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Ms. McQuinn?
Yes, with the understanding that from my part, this is absolutely no criticism of the work that's been done for us by our consultant. It's because we discovered that we had an issue with the job description that shouldn't be in the policy. So I don't want this to reflect that we are not happy with their work.
Mrs. Andrews?
And I'd like to share that, because we have seen great work with Ray and Associates, but it's obviously right here in Palm Beach County, where we made the mistakes with our policy and our job description. And they followed probably what we gave them, but it's obvious that it's a problem for those who are actually applying for the job, those that wanted to apply for the job. So in all honesty, we have to get it right. So this has no reflection on Ray and Associates, but right now, we have to stop the process and get it right. So this is why I second.
All right, all, all in favor? Dr. Robinson's motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. I think that's it. Mr. Ray, so you understand what we're, we're just going to terminate it for now, hopefully we'll be working with you again, once we figure out what we need to change here, so we can broaden the, the applicant pool, so you'll be able to bring us more, more, more applicants, if, you know, if the board retains you again to, to do that, and if you're willing to work for us again. So I guess that's it, at this point. Thank you.
Understood, and we're always willing to work with you.
And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Who notifies the applicants that are out there, waiting to hear something?
Superintendent, can you have HR do that?
Yeah, we'll have HR follow away with Ray about closing out this process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ray, Molly, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
We need a motion to adjourn, all in favor? Mr. Shaw, Mrs. Andrews, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries six zero.
Board members, we have a 5 o'clock with our employees' opinion ceremony.
Two of us, Mr. Superintendent, Ms. McQuinn and I, have to be at a Holocaust, down at 6 o'clock, in, in the south end of the county.